Good evening. I would like to call the June 26th um school board meeting to order. Lisa, will you call the roll?
Director Weber.
Here.
W Felton?
Here.
Claflin?
Here.
Lala Burdi?
Here.
T Felton?
Here.
And Chair Rush?
Here.
At six present at six o'clock.
Excellent. I think so. Um, all right. If we could rise for pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I will ask for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for this evening as well as the committee of the whole and regular meeting of June 12th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed? Motion carries. And we will begin tonight with our quality in action. Our human resource director, Joel Miltier, is going to provide some highlights from our Grow Your Own Grant and has some guests with him tonight as well.
Thank you. Good evening. We have the privilege of coming before you tonight to share that our district has been selected to receive the Minnesota Grow Your Own Grant as part of a collaborative effort between South St. Paul, Ember Grove, and West St. Paul school districts. This is an extraordinarily competitive grant in the state of Minnesota. The purpose of the Grow Your Own Grant program is to strive to increase and diversify the teacher workforce in the state of Minnesota. Eligible school districts, charter schools, intermediate districts, and cooperatives who receive the grant may apply for one or both of the following pathways: a Grow Your Own Grant for adults and a Grow Your Own Grant pathway for secondary students. In November of 2022, the tri-district worked collaboratively to apply for this competitive grant funding and received the joyful news this past June, or this month actually, that our district had been selected. The grant received is a $750,000 grant.
Woo!
Which will be used to support the educational expenses for staff and students from all three districts to achieve their teaching degrees. This grant is for four years, which would cover the completion of a full degree. Increasing the diversity of educators in the classroom benefits all students, especially those from historically marginalized populations who often do not see educators who look like them during their time in school. It is my pleasure to introduce Amber Gay and Charmaine Coleman, our district's first two current staff members who will receive the Grow Your Own Grants to help them pursue and achieve their teaching and begin teaching, or begin their education in January of 2024. So I will turn it over to them.
Well, first, round of applause.
I will go first. I was just here a couple weeks ago. It's good to see you all again. We were invited to come and say a few words about what receiving this scholarship opportunity means to us. It means a lot to me. It was difficult to sort of condense it all down into something to share with you all, but I came to South St. Paul six years ago after having taught preschool, which is a different set of requirements altogether, in St. Paul. And it was just a little while ago that Chuck Ochaki approached me during like an average work day. We were like in passing in the hallway and asked me if I would be interested in doing something like this. And it was a very difficult offer to say no to, so I was happy to accept. I come from a family of teachers, and so this opportunity means that I'll get to continue participating in that, especially here in the place that I graduated from. And I did the math, and my sons will graduate in 2030, which seems like a really long time from now, but it's not. So this is a very meaningful opportunity for me in that way, and then getting to be a greater part of my students' school experience, right? Like Charlize was one of my preschool students at Lincoln, and it's really good to see her again, and I will get to see her again when she's a high schooler and be one of her teachers. So.
Fantastic.
Awesome.
That's great.
So, okay, I'm a little bit nervous and, um, and my words may fumble, but what this means to me, and I may get a little emotional.
That's okay.
This is huge. The magnitude of somebody coming to you and saying, "I would like to offer you," when my principal, my friend over there, Ms. Leaborg, approached me and said, "Would you like me to put your name in a, I want to put your name in a pool to, for this particular grant coming in?" And I'm like, "Okay." And then when I didn't hear nothing, didn't hear nothing, I figured, "Oh, well, that's another chance lost." Got my hopes up high. But when Mr. Joel here finally called me, reality hit me big time to know that I have the opportunity to go to school, me as a black woman. Get to fully fund, go to school. Y'all just don't know how much this means to me. You don't know the magnitude of what this blessing is for me. And I can't enunciate. I can't articulate all that well. I've been in this district for a while. I started as a lunch lady. I'm al- I've always been caring, always been loving, always been uplifting to all the people that come in contact with me. And to hear somebody say that you don't have to worry, that you have to go to school. We got you. We see you. That is huge, Lord. Y'all just don't understand. It's huge to not only see my baby girl right there, to see her mommy go back to school, and to know that I won't have any stress or headache or, or any candidate that comes that they know. And my kids in this district, y'all just don't know what it means. It is so huge. This is huge to know that I, me, Charmaine Coleman, get to be in the district that I love, and y'all behind me. You're saying that you behind me. You want to do this? Here you go. That is huge. It's huge. And that's all I can say right there. And I don't want to make anybody else's voice. So thank you guys.
But we also know how many students you two have already affected and benefited along the way in South St. Paul. We're such a small community that we get to hear those stories really quickly, and to see you continue to grow inside our schools and further that, I am so proud and I'm so excited for you, but I'm also so excited about what that means for our district too.
That and one more thing. I'm sorry. I'm also the creator of the Craftsy Corner, and I'm pretty sure y'all had that come across y'all board right now.
Yep.
But when I told the children that Craftsy Corner, first of all, they panicked and they thought I was closing it down. They was like, "No." And when I told them that Ms. Charmaine has an opportunity to actually be a teacher, which I'm already am, but to actually have a degree that says that, yes, now you are, you are proven, you are, you worked hard enough, is huge. And they all clapped for me and was like, "Yes, Ms. Charmaine. I'm so excited for you." But I don't think reality has hit, hit. I know people keep saying that, "You got this. It's okay. You're going to start in 2024," but my brain hasn't fully digested it yet, how huge this is. So thank you guys for the opportunity. I would not let you down. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Oh, just a question. So what are you going to study? Like, what is your, what is the end goal of teaching?
So, uh, for me, the end goal is, um, special education through K through 12.
Okay.
Um, the, uh, excuse me. I want to stay in my middle school.
Okay.
Um, that's my area, my niche. I already got some relationships developed there and probably minor in like human behavior or social, emotional behavior, because I kind of do that already, because I'm a student support assistant, uh, excuse me, student support specialist for middle school right now. So if I can combine all that into one to know who I am, then it's good.
Fantastic.
I have been working in special ed since I came to South St. Paul, and I'm hoping to continue working in special ed after I graduate. So I'm not sure what my focus will be yet, but, um, yeah, I'm really excited to have my own classroom and my own students and like a solid place to land. It's mind blowing.
Awesome.
Awesome. I don't know. We're just full of it. We even lost a board member for a while. We just went rogue.
I did go rogue. I hope other people in the district are aware of this and that this information is...
I haven't told anyone yet.
Oh, okay.
This is the moment?
Well, Joel, do you mind, because there, we do have more slots. So do you want to speak to that, Joel?
Absolutely. So each district has approximately four slots. Uh, with the $750,000, it is, the plan is a full ride scholarship for four different individuals in each school district to go to, back to school and get their degrees. So the next step that we're looking at, we've already reached out to Mr. Tim Caneely to talk about students who have recently graduated. We'd like to offer two of the slots to recent graduates that have an interest in teaching and would like to go back to school but maybe didn't have the ability, or it wasn't the right time for them to go back to school when they graduated. So we're going to be reaching out and trying to find some students and particularly look at a process if we have more than two that are interested in going to figure out how we do that, or perhaps spread that money out a little bit further and maybe help more people be able to go. So it is a four-year grant program. We're hoping that the state continues this program based on the success of it. So we'll be giving you an update in the future to let you know how they're doing in school as well as to let you know how the others. So we're definitely going to have a cohort that starts around January 2024. Um, we are building supports into the tri-district so that they can support these future teachers as they go through the program, support with each other, as well as teacher mentors in the districts as things that we're looking at as well, to make sure that they have all the support and resources they need to be as successful as possible throughout the program. And this is, is through Metropolitan State University, is a school that we're partnering with for this, which does an excellent job at providing schedules that work with work schedules and so forth as well, so they can go to still stay working in the district, hopefully, while they go to school. As well as be able to finish their education at the same time, so.
Boy, that's really fun.
Please check in with us as time goes on, so we know where you're, how it's going.
Can you just clip like her speech right there and send it to all the legislators and they'll be like, "Sold! Keep going."
Also, to have your daughter in the audience cheering you on, that's a, that's a pretty special moment.
One of three. I have three. My older ones didn't want to come.
This is such a wonderful example of how we're a learning organization and to show students the importance of continuing education over their careers. I'm really excited for you, and you will be such amazing role models for your students. You are already, and this will just add to all of your, uh, the stars on your crowns.
Awesome. Well, congratulations.
Yes.
That is a whole lot of fun. And now we have like other business we have to do along the way. All right. So up next would be, um, a report from, uh, public listening. We did not have any public listening session submissions in the last two weeks. So next I will turn it over to Vice Chair Monica Weber for a committee of the whole report.
Hello. So we talked about, um, once again, we're going to be approving the FY24 budget this evening. So our finance director will go through all the details of that shortly on our agenda. So we've, um, this was the third different, um, meeting that we've been talking about the budget, and so we've gone over these numbers a couple different times and learned about, um, implications about all of them. So that was the first part of the, the Kyle meeting. Um, and then we talked about, um, um, ABE, um, and the partnership that we have with our tri-district, um, to do our adult-based education and continuing that. Um, as many of you know, we have a school board vacancy, um, and so we have a resolution tonight formally, um, offer that position and to one of the people who applied. So we talked about that, talked about everyone's favorite handbooks and guidebooks for the upcoming school year, student responsibilities, parent responsibilities, um, and made sure that we approved and finalized all of those. Um, we have a slew of policies that will be getting their third reading, um, tonight, and then one emergency policy that we're going to be talking, talking about. So you can find all of those, um, on the website. And then we also did our committee updates, including, um, our executive committee report, um, talking about our superintendent evaluation, and we will be giving the full report on that in Jolong. Um, and so we went over some of the preliminary, um, evaluative tools that we used for our superintendent as well as examining, um, you know, other, other parts of the, the compensation package and co- and contract for that. And that was our committee of the whole meeting.
There was a lot of things packed in there.
Did have a full meeting.
All right. Next, I will turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Zambrino, for a report from around the district.
Thank you, Chair Rush. I'm struggling here after that Grow Your Own. I just don't think I'm, you know, this is the good stuff I have here, but nothing quite like that.
It's hard, hard to compete with that level of excitement.
And just two amazing individuals who, as we've said, done so much for the district and great to see that opportunity for them to, to continue to grow. But in a little shorter presentation here tonight, just with it being summer, but want to remind folks that we do have, uh, free summer meals available. So we've, uh, shared this before, but we partner with the Open Door to offer free meals to, uh, any, um, children in the community 18 and under. Don't have to be necessarily a, a, a student of South St. Paul, but they do have to be in the community and 18 and under. And then they are brought to designated locations. So if you want to find out where those locations are, times and availability, just go to our, our website there, the newsroom and, and headlines. You can find out more. Very excited, uh, to continue a partnership with Dakota County around vaccinations. So actually tomorrow from 4:30 to 6:30 at our Central Square Community Center, uh, they have free vaccines, really, really easy. So no appointment needed, no insurance needed, uh, no state ID or other documentation required. All the vaccines are free. So anyone who is knowing they're in need or their child's in need of, of vaccines, uh, can go there. The only rule is that the minors do, any minors need to be accompanied by a parent or guardian. Uh, but Minnesota law does require some vaccinations to be in place before school starts. So great opportunity for, um, for folks to, to get that taken care of for your kids this summer. A full list of vaccines, uh, vaccinations offered and more information can be found at that same spot on our, on our website, the newsroom and headlines. I'm hoping that people are enjoying the new addition of Six Times, our communications team. This is all homegrown, made in-house. I've actually had a number of, uh, community members reach out to me to say how much they appreciated seeing this document. Uh, we know that in the fall, um, there was a big commitment given to, to our district from our community, and this is a, an opportunity for us to share some of the great work going on. So our counselors and some of the things they're doing. But, uh, we've built out, the referendum campaign was Packer Pride, Packer Promise, and so now we are holding ourselves to account to deliver on that Packer Promise. So there's details around our, our pathway to Packer Promise, or how we're going to be bolstering our academic achievement of our students, investing in student supports while also expanding programs and opportunities. We actually had, uh, a meeting today, a summer leadership institute with our new positions, our instructional coaches and social workers, counselors and administrators today, and they are, uh, the spirit and the, and the mood in that room of excitement to just really deliver for this community was, was high. So hopefully you got that mailed to your home. If you did not, you can certainly stop by any of our sites while we're open and pick up a copy. They do look great, but also available on our website in English and Spanish. So, uh, we want to make sure that's accessible to folks. Some highlights from things around, uh, the community here, the district. We had a lot of fun at the Capoja Days. I'm trying to look at how soaked everyone is in this picture. John, uh, was, uh, our chair really put himself out there with no, uh, raincoat, no umbrella as we sat there for almost an hour, uh, waiting for the parade to start. But I'll just say like we were holding the faith that that rain was going to stop. And sure enough, like what, just a couple minutes before we were supposed to, uh, supposed to roll out, it just cleared up. I'm sure there were rainbows. I was looking for the rainbows. I don't know if I actually saw any, but, uh, what a fun event for the community and, and it was fun to get there. We, uh, had the little house there, but we had some of, we let the kids go into the, to that little house to stay dry while the rest of us soaked up. We, I do apologize if any candy you received was soggy, because it rained like three inches on us while we were standing there. So we'll, uh, we'll make sure to keep them in bags or something longer if that ever happens again. But what a fun weekend for Capoja Days. Uh, again, we're up and running with summer learning. So we started that last week. So we have the early learning summer blast for incoming kinders, elementary, our students in first through fifth grader in there, and then the Packer Preview Session One, uh, was started. And, uh, coming up again, we'll have, uh, Middle School Summer Learning Academy and another session of Packer Preview. So hopefully people are getting a lot. I did have a chance to see the kids. It's fun. I, I really struggle when the, when the buildings are empty, so I'm always excited when, when the summer programming picks up, because if you ever walk around a big school and there's no children, it just doesn't feel right. So it's fun to have the summer programming up and going. I want to make sure people are aware about, uh, Community Ed Camp that we've had going. Uh, community, our gymnast recently attended a gymnastics camp offered through our community ed program. The all-day camp consists of, um, learning gymnastic events, games, outside playtime, and art. Uh, the summer session gymnastics classes are beginning soon, and another camp coming up in August. You can visit our community ed website to find more information and register. And I will say that this is a program that just continues to grow. I'm looking back at Gene Zender sitting in the back who's worked with that program, and there's just like such high interest. And I, I know that there's a lot of fun that happens there, a lot of character, uh, development and camaraderie. And that picture, I think, just kind of paints a pretty good picture about what the kids get out of that. As always, you can follow us on social media and, and we do our best to keep, um, information flowing there. And then just some important dates for folks to be aware of. We mentioned the free meals for kids. So, uh, this week, so the 26th through the 29th, I mentioned the vaccination clinic happening tomorrow at Central Square, 4:30 to 6:30. We got Independence Day, so Fourth of July, we will be on a district holiday. And then just for those folks, we do have a lot of folks. I, um, I was talking about Gene there a minute ago. Our, our senior center numbers, I think it was 200 and, how many do we have in there now? 203. That's what I thought it was. So 203 of our seniors who are signed on. So they, a lot of others who access that, uh, that building, but just want to make sure that everyone's aware of July 10th to 15th is closed, so we can keep it clean and nice and refreshed for, uh, the next year that we're about to start here in July. So, uh, appreciate that opportunity to talk. As always, our meeting materials are available on our website for review at any time.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Zambrino. Up next, we have our consent items. Consent items are typically, um, financial claims, staffing, personnel in nature, um, and are a part of our board packet and been discussed by the board during committee of the whole meetings and through our board education. I am looking for a motion to approve our consent items. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Up next, we have a wealth of policies under review that are on their third reading. Um, so these have been available in our, uh, board packets for the last three meetings. But these are updates to some of our district policies, um, a lot of them in relation to guidance from Minnesota School Boards Association or changes in statute that has required a little bit of movement in some of the language that is around these. We also had one, um, sort of emergency addition that we are adding to that mix as well as it is being mandated by the state, uh, to be put in place, and that is, um, in relation to overdose medication. Um, but that one will be read separately. If you have any questions on those policies, you can certainly review those through our board packet. Lisa, I don't have to call a vote for everyone individually, do I?
Nope. It's just one, um, motion for the A and then the B.
We'd be here tomorrow still if, uh, that's, uh, what we were going to do. All right. For the first round, uh, I am looking for approval of, um, the policies that are under review for their third consecutive meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those policies and that motion carries. The second policy that is, uh, being handled separately, um, is for, um, emergency overdose medication as the state has, uh, passed, uh, some rules that, um, that be in place for all schools by July 1st. That is a very short turnaround time for boards to be able to, um, conduct that and have three policy reviews. There is also a little bit of complication in terms of being able to get those in place. Um, but fortunately, as a district who has SROs, um, our SROs already have that in place, but we will put the policy in place for now, and then we will review the policy once the medication is available for us inside of the district. So for that, I am looking for a motion to approve the following policy under the emergency clause to meet recent legislation that was passed in the spring of 2023, which is overdose medication policy 516 dot five. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Any additional discussion?
A second.
Oh, second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, the motion carries. And then we move on to our business items. We've got a few things on the agenda tonight. First, uh, item for business, I am looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 2023-24 Independent Employee Agreement. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
And for discussion, I will refer to Joel Miltier.
Good evening again. Administration recommends a one-year agreement for the 23-24 school year with employees in the independent group, including a 3% salary increase and a 2% increase to the district contribution to health insurance. We're also recommending a slight market adjustment for two of the director positions. Independents include staff in the following employee groups, administrators, coordinators, and administrative support, district support, technology, student support, and nutrition services. This agreement is within the salary and benefit parameters established by the school board. Approval of the 23-24 Independent Employee Agreement is our recommendation for you this evening.
Excellent. Thank you. And I also want to say from the board, I greatly appreciate your approach to these negotiations as we're sort of taking that on through market studies for all positions across the district. Any additional comments or questions? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you. Um, next, I am looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the South Suburban Adult Basic Education Consortium Agreement, um, for the period of July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2028. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And I, for discussion, I will turn, return to Gene Zender.
Hi, thank you so much. Um, I'm here before you tonight to ask for our consortium agreement to continue. This agreement has been in place since 1974. It first started with, uh, South St. Paul and Ember Grove, and then in 1981, West St. Paul, uh, joined the consortium. So, um, our mission clearly is in adult education is to provide adults with educational opportunities to acquire and improve their literacy skills, necessarily become self-sufficient, and to participate effectively as productive workers, family members, and citizens. So that is why I stand before you tonight and ask for your approval of the next five years of our consortium to continue, um, knowing that, um, Dr. Zambrino and I have met with the two other superintendents and the community ed directors, and I've made the commitment to meeting, um, quarterly so that everyone is updated and, um, I'm happy to help fill in and learn and have that, uh, support from the other two districts as well, too. And as along, um, excuse me, along with my two colleagues, uh, community ed directors of Ember Grove and West St. Paul as well, so.
Excellent. Excellent.
Any questions?
No. Uh, there's something we discussed in our committee of the whole meeting, but also want to commend your success in overseeing that program and also navigating what a strange previous five years this has been to do adult basic education and to be able to navigate through and, um, sustain as strong a programs as you have is really remarkable.
Well, I thank you. We have a good team.
So, excellent. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next, I am looking for approval Next, I am looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the fiscal year 24 budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
And for discussion, I will turn over to Brady Hoffman. We've been working hard at this for quite some time now.
We've been at this for a little bit, yes. So tonight is the kind of coming to the finish line of the FY24 budget process. So I'm going to go over a quick overview. So there's four main funds that we have a budget that we adopt within. That's the general fund, which is our main operating fund of the district. We have our food service fund, which accounts for all the meals served to our students and staff. And then we have our community service fund. That is, we just had our director of peer, Jean Zender, so that's ABE. It's all of our school age care. We've got pre-K that runs through there. And then we have our debt service fund, which is voter-approved or other allowable debt that we have as a district to account specifically for those proceeds and those debt payments. So the budget process kicks off several months ago. So back in January, we reviewed the initial budget information with the school board. And then through February, March, administration works through kind of those details. We work through recommendations and present those to the board. Then in March and April, those proposed adjustments that we look at making. Come April, May, the finance staff is where we really dig into the details. We take that projection and really work it into the lineups to pull it all together, which then brings us to June, where we've now three meetings in a row working with the school board and the COW that walked through the formal budget that's being presented this evening. Overall budget assumptions. So within our general fund, there's several revenue assumptions that we have to take into consideration. The first of those is our basic formula allowance. So this is a legislative year. So we had to kind of work off of the unknowns up until May, whenever we really found out what the legislature was landing on. They did land on a 4% increase, so that takes our per pupil amount up to 7,138. Also, within the legislative session, it's a two-year biennium. So the second year of the biennium has a 2% increase built in, so we know for FY25 what that looks like. And then they did attach it to inflation. So moving beyond, it'll be between 2% and 3% that we will experience as an increase in that funding formula. COVID federal relief funding, this has been saving a lot of districts over the last few years, and it's been saving us as well. So we've been using this to offset budget reductions. So this FY24 budget is the last year that we have a chunk of these dollars available. This was a big reason why when we went to the voters for a levy increase was to basically replace these COVID dollars that were going away so it could sustain what we had. So that allows us to avoid some of the massive reductions that other districts are experiencing around us who didn't have a levy increase like that. So we do have those COVID dollars available to us here for one more year. Special education cross subsidy aid, so this has been a topic for years. So we are mandated to provide special education services. However, the state and federal government have failed to provide adequate funding to cover those costs. So that shortfall in the funding is called the cross subsidy. So we did have a huge increase that we're grateful for through the legislation this year. So previously, the cross subsidy, so that shortfall, the state was covering 6.43% of that shortage. Now, through this recent legislation, that's increasing up to 44%. So they're still only getting halfway, not quite halfway to that full cross subsidy amount. So our general fund is still absorbing some of those costs, but that is a huge win for us as we work through the budget process. There are other funding increases as well. So the English learners, we also have a cross subsidy, a shortage there in state funding to cover those required costs. So they did increase the cross subsidy there. There is also some new student support personnel aid, some new library aid, as well as an increase to our American Indian aid. On the expenditure side, we're entering a year where we have several contracts unsettled. So our teachers, our pairs, and our principal contracts are currently up for negotiations. So in a scenario like this, we have to make assumptions. So we estimate potential contract settlements and build that into the budget. And then for those contracts that are settled and known, we build in those assumptions that are those known amounts into our projection. We have some additional positions for academic and student support that were funded with the voters levy increase, as well as some additional compensatory funding. And then for non-salary items, a lot of times we try and hold those as constant as possible, but whenever inflation kicks in and there's certain market demands, we do account for those. So transportation is one of those contracts that's up for negotiation that's facing a larger increase because of the staffing shortages and the fuel costs and those pieces. So those are things we build in as well. One of the variables that we are navigating through this legislative session as well is now unemployment for hourly employees. So our hourly employees are now eligible for unemployment in the summer months. Our unemployment cost up to this point is an item that flows through our levy. So any unemployment cost we incur gets reimbursed through the tax levy. But the summer unemployment is specifically excluded from that levy. The state did set aside a funding stream for that. However, it's to be determined yet at what level and what amount of reimbursement we will receive. Are we going to be fully reimbursed for those unemployment costs or not? That's to be determined by the Commissioner of Education. So that's a piece we're navigating right now. There are employees who have applied for unemployment, but we won't know for a little while yet on what that impact is on our budget. And then the biggest variable that we deal with as well as enrollment. We have been facing declining enrollment for several years now, and we're projected to continue over the next five years. And that's the main driver. So we've been talking about our revenues as a per pupil amount. So as our per pupils decline, our revenue declines along with those. So here is our enrollment projection. So starting back in 1617 was our peak. We were just over 3,500 students. As you can see, as you work left to right, we've been declining in enrollment until that checkered bar, which is where we are current year, the year we're just wrapping up. And then the next fiscal year there in the light blue is what we're projecting for 24. So we're down another 130 students. And then we continue to step down for the next five years. And the biggest driver in this is really the decline in birth rates. So we've had an enrollment studied on. Our birth rates are down over 30% over the last 10 years. So as we graduate larger classes, we have less kindergartners coming in to replace them. And so it's a natural decline that we're experiencing through the system. So this is our current snapshot by grade, our enrollment. So as you can see, our kindergarten through sixth grade are 200 students roughly or less, where then our seventh through 12th graders are 235 and greater. So as we graduate out those larger classes and bring in those smaller kindergarten sections, that's what's leading a big player in this decline in enrollment. So as we lose, as our enrollment declines, we lose that revenue. And that's what drives kind of the budget conversations that we have of funding doesn't keep pace. And then when you layer in enrollment, that's what creates kind of that larger budget challenge that we've historically been facing. Looking at our general fund summary, so this is just a high-level snapshot. The first column of numbers is where we ended, final numbers for FY22. So we have those are audited final numbers. And then we have what we had budgeted for our fiscal year 23, which then rolls forward into what we're proposing for next year. So we have our enrollment across the top. The bottom row is our unassigned fund balance. So per board policy, we have a minimum of 8% unassigned. As we're looking at our proposed budget, it is at 13.67%. We do project a surplus of 2.3 million for FY24. And that, a big part of it is because we have the additional levy dollars coming in while we still had one year of the COVID funding left. So when the COVID funding goes away, that's when we look out to FY24, our revenues drop from 51.8 million down to 49.2. And a large chunk of that is the COVID dollars going away. And then the remainder of that is going down another 100 students in our projected enrollment. So whenever the revenue drops and our expenses increase with inflation, FY24 is looking at a $960,000 deficit. If nothing is done and we continue to decline and project out, that's where that deficit grows. But this is why we go through a budget process. This is why we work as a leadership team of how do we, and with the school board and engaging our stakeholders on defining who we are and where do we want to go to help create that pathway to the Packer promise in a sustainable way. So when we break down that fund balance, so we're at 13.67%, that's just our unassigned component. There are other buckets within our fund balance that are restricted or assigned. So we do have a restricted bucket of money, 2.8 million, which is restricted by state statute or some outside entity. The largest item within that is our operating capital at just over a million. And the biggest chunk of that is the Jefferson property proceeds for when we sold the land of the city. So we sold real property. We have to restrict those for capital. So we have our restricted fund balances as well as our assigned and unassigned. As we move ahead, looking at the breakdown of our revenues and where do those money, those dollars come from? So we have 51.8 million in total revenue. The left half of this pie chart is our general state aid. So whenever the state gives us 4%, the amount of revenue that's getting adjusted by that 4% is that 55%. So it's not adjusting our total revenue up. It's only half of our revenue. So it's not, so it's just impacting that portion. The categorical state aid is kind of that bottom right section. That's going to be things like our special ed revenue, our compensatory revenue, the state funding buckets that have more strings attached to them. Up at the top, we have our taxes, which is about 22% of our general fund revenue. And then our federal makes up about 6%. And that's on the higher side right now for federal funds because we have the COVID dollars. So once those COVID dollars go away, that slice will drop down to 4%. But overall, federal is still a small amount of our overall revenue. When we look at how we spend our money, where does our money go? We are a people organization. 80% of our cost is investing in our people that deliver the education services to our students. 57% of that, 80% is the salaries. And then there's the benefit components, the health insurance, the TRA, the FICA, all of those components that play into it. So 80% of our budget is people. 13%, the next largest slice is purchase services. So that's things like transportation, attorneys, we're required to have an audit, working through repairs and maintenance, and those kind of pieces all come through purchase services. So it leaves capital, supplies, and other as the remaining 7% of our budget, so a really small portion. Shifting gears to our nutrition services fund, so this is our food service. So back in March, the state approved the free school meals for kids. So the state will provide reimbursement to the district starting this July. So this next school year, all students will eat free and the state will contribute the difference to what families were paying before. We've been getting more and more clarification from MDE as we have gone, so we're still going to need educational benefit forms completed. There's more benefits that come from that than just the free meals. As a family and as a student, this coming year will look the same going through the lunch line. They'll still have to put their PIN numbers in and all of those pieces. However, the state will pay what families were paying before. So it's not the type where you can just grab and go. We still need families to do those forms and then the students to put their PINs in as they go through those lunch lines. Community education, so we do have some structure increases in fee structures that have been approved by the school board, which are routine in nature for school age care and preschool. We've talked about adult basis, basic education tonight. So that was one of those that was held harmless through COVID at that funding level, but as those contact hours were down, it was, you know, it was a relief that we were held harmless there. This current legislation did come through and increase how that was funded in that formula. So we are only losing about $20,000 in revenue. Worst-case scenario would have been significantly worse, which had been really detrimental to the program, but this has allowed us to really work to build back up those contact hours and make this a sustainable program. One other piece that came through with community ed. So within the school age care program, there's a disabled levy that we levy actual expenses for and get reimbursed. During COVID, we didn't offer school age care. So we levy upfront, we got the money, but then we didn't incur the expenses. So the initial communication was those dollars were going to have to go back. The state came through and said, nope, we're not going to penalize you for that, retain those funds. So that's allowed us to build a cushion in our community ed fund. So as we're building ourselves back up out of COVID, we had a nice fund balance there to leverage on as we're growing these programs without having to make significant reductions within those programs. The last fund we adopted budget for is our debt service fund. So like I said at the very beginning, this is where we account for all of our outstanding debt within the school district. We are required to levy on our taxpayers 105% of what those debt payments are. And that's in the event that there's delinquent tax collections. We still collect enough to be good on those payments. Over the years, we accumulate a fund balance related to that because as we have good tax collections, we are going to grow a fund balance. So within the levy mechanism, there is a way that those excess collections are refunded back to the taxpayers. So when we look at the debt service fund, you'll see we're actually adopting a deficit budget this year because we're spending down the fund balance that we've already collected. So that's saving the taxpayers on the upcoming tax levy. So here's a summary that shows, the first row is the general fund we saw before. Now we've had, we're also added in the food service, community education, and the debt service funds. So the food service overall budget is a deficit spend of $88,000, which is intentional. We have grown our fund balance to the point where we need to be strategic in spending it down. There is an MDE threshold on how much you can have in reserve in your food service fund. So we're being strategic in spending ourselves down to the proper level. Community education is also an intentional spend down of $64,000, so we're still remaining a healthy fund balance there. And then our debt service fund, like I just mentioned, is that intentional deficit budget as we have accumulated adequate fund balance to be good on our payments with that levy amount. So that is a high-level walkthrough of months and months of details and conversations and work. So I'll open it up for any questions that the school board may have.
I'll turn to the board first.
You covered most of my questions very well. Thank you for explaining that coverage of that cross subsidy very clearly and explaining to folks that might not be as familiar with some of the language we use on education cross subsidies, that the funding will help fill in where we're already subsidizing that education stuff. We're not receiving enough, but we're receiving a lot more now. And thank you so much for very clearly showing that pie chart where our revenue that is getting that 4% increase, it really only applies to about half of our revenue. So while we are thrilled to be getting a 4% increase in state aid, that's only, comes out to about 2% of our overall revenue. So not as much as it might look. But my one question that I did want to ask crosses between some of our funds. Within the food service fund, lunches right now have not been covered by this free lunch program. And I understand that we've had a debt in that system and not looking to find families and ask them to pay for it. But I want to know where that money will come from to cover the debt in the lunch budgets?
Yep. So we have our deficit meal balances, so families who didn't qualify for free meals or else they were reduced and weren't paying. We have, they should have been paying and they haven't. So we've accumulated deficit balances. And as soon as this was announced back in March, I think a lot of families, not just in South St. Paul, but across a lot of districts, we've talked about this, have families just all of a sudden stopped paying, just thinking it was effective already. So our deficit balances is up over 60 grand of delinquent deficit meal balances. So it's a hard thing to collect on when we know meals are going to be free here coming up this next year as well. So at some point in time, in the event we determine that it's not collectible and we're not going to collect from families, it would become a burden on the general fund to support that and to make whole on that. Because our food service fund, the way those funding streams work, we can't have bad debt expense. It's not an allowable use of food service funds. So $60,000 is about what's out there right now and something we'll have to navigate here as we go through this next year.
Sure. Compared to the whole budget, that's a small amount. And I'm looking forward to all of our students getting lunches without any questions and fully reimbursed. That'll be great for all of our kids.
I would just like to say, as a, being on the Finance Committee for the first time, that there's no one, and I would say this to anybody in the community who asked, who I would rather have walking me through the budget than Brady. He does a stellar job of saying what the funding was last year, what it is this current year, what it's going to be next year, what it could be in three years, what it could be. And like, give him like any scenario and he will like come up with the numbers for like how it works. So I just want people to be aware of the great talent we have in our district office and just really thank you for all the just very clear instructions because these are not easy monies to like figure out, especially when you have no idea what a legislature might do. So I just wanted to make sure that we recognize the great talent that we have in our district office.
Thank you.
We started the Finance Committee meetings with a lot of uncertainty.
In addition to all of your work, I also think I would be remiss if we also did not thank our community. Had our community not supported the levy during this time, this would have been a much harder spring for our schools, for the board, and for our staff going forward. And so the fact that the community also is choosing to support our schools, I am very grateful for as well. It means we can continue to provide quality education for all of our students, so. All right. All of those in favor of approving the fiscal year 24 budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, the motion carries. Thank you very much, Brady. Next, I am looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 23-24 Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And for discussion, I will turn to Dr. Zambrino.
Yeah, thank you Chair Rush. So this is an annual process we go through to review our Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. So that was reviewed by collaboratively with all of our building leaders, as well as our district leadership team, and then presented to you all. And so I think a lot of people think, you know, and it is, the consequences, a lot of things like that for when kids, if they find themselves in trouble. And of course, we work as hard as we can to have them not be in there. But I really liked that it starts with student rights because we, it is about our students having a right to a high-quality, safe learning environment. And so this handbook just guides our work with regard to that. So again, sometimes it's, if something goes wrong, what is the consequence? But moreover, I think it's important that it really is about ensuring a safe and conducive learning environment.
Excellent. Sort of fits into that desired daily experience that we want for all of our students and families. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That the motion carries. Next, I'm looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the resolution filling the board vacancy by appointment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And I think both of those things are covered, motion and second. So the school board did have a vacancy with the passing of Bernie Bierman. Last week, we conducted interviews for three interim candidates who had filed to fill that position. And the board has selected an applicant to fill that position. Kim Hume is going to, pending board approval, be joining our board as an interim position as we lead towards also doing a special election. And from all of the board, we congratulate you and look forward to working with you. As a resolution, I need Lisa for you to please call the roll.
Director W. Felton.
Yes.
Cleflyn.
Yes.
Lala Burdi.
Yes.
T. Felton.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
And Chair Rush.
Yes.
That's six yeas.
With that, the motion carries. In relation to that, the board is looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve a resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And with that, we will be looking to file in the first two weeks of August that people could file for the position for the November election. It looks to be the only item that will be on our ballot this fall for South St. Paul. So encourage our community to be strongly engaged in that. Lisa, will you call a roll call vote?
Director Cleflyn.
Yes.
Lala Burdi.
Yes.
T. Felton.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
W. Felton.
Yes.
And Rush.
Yes.
Six yeas.
With that, the motion carries. That was a lot of business items for the night. That was a lot of things to get through. But now we are to board member reports. And I will first turn down to Wendy Felton.
I just want to say thank you to everyone who helped to conduct all of the Capoja Days activities. And a huge personal thank you to everyone at the parade. We all made it through the rain that started. But just want to thank everyone for clapping to us, thanking us, waving at us. And I appreciate everyone being so supportive of the board as we went through the parade. So thank you.
Excellent. Tim Felton.
Yeah, I think I'll just echo what Wendy said. It was a great parade, great Capoja Days, fireworks, everything. It was a wonderful weekend. So thanks to South St. Paul.
Excellent. Monica Weber?
In a similar vein, you never really get to know people until you stand in the rain with them for an hour before you get to walk through a parade. So it was a memorable moment that I will cherish and just shows the dedication of people throughout the entire parade who were all willing to stand there in the rain, waiting to see if it was still going to happen. And also thanks to the community members who stayed in the rain to watch us. It was, it was super fun. And there's also thank you again for all the Capoja Days activities. I got to help with the bingo on Saturday, and our former board chair was the caller for the bingo, for the bingo event. So that was fun to be able to hang out with the community members in that way.
Nikki Lala Burdi?
I would like to shout out to the people in South St. Paul and the businesses, friends, enemies. I don't, no, just kidding. For the golf tournament that happened last Monday, we could go today, for Peacemaker, Minnesota. My spousal unit, John, is very involved in Peacemaker, Minnesota. And it's a, it's a program to help with bullying in schools and helping kids with peaceful conflict resolution. Thanks to the many people who donated, who golfed, he had the most golfers he's ever had, we are going to be able to put over 20 grand into our South St. Paul endowment, which is matched by the state. And it will help to continue to fund the Peace Guides at Capoja. And then it has to be, it has to be at a certain level before you can start drawing down on it. So we're just continuing to add to the endowment. So on behalf of John and Dan McNeil, who runs the whole thing, a big thank you to the generous-hearted people and businesses in South St. Paul that supported this. So thank you.
Excellent. And Cleflyn?
Thank you. I really enjoyed seeing all of the kids that along the parade route wearing their South St. Paul Packer t-shirts. Our school community identity is so closely tied with our city identity. And I was just so happy to see people proudly wearing their Packer pride gear. And then I also will be going to the local issues meeting where we talk with the city, other city businesses, departments of city, the city structure, Parks and Rec, the Police Department, Fire Department. So that local issues meeting is Wednesday, June 28, at 8 o'clock in the morning at Central Square. It's a great chance for us to all share what is going on with it in our little parts of South St. Paul.
Excellent. All right. Yeah, I can echo all of the feelings of community that we have. From the board, I would also like to express condolences to Dr. Webb again one more time. Services for his wife were just this last weekend. And it was a really remarkable turnout of South St. Paul folks to support him and his family during this time. And South St. Paul shows up for each other. And I guess I was just very impressed with that. And I know that was really meaningful to him and his family. Had a great time at Capoja Days as well. It was a really good event. And looking forward to the conclusion of summer school, Packer preview, and a great school year ahead of us. Excellent. All right. With that, with no other further items on our agenda, I am looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting of June 26, 2023.
So moved.
Any seconds?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
With that, the June 26, 2023 school board meeting is adjourned at 6:59. Thank you, everyone.